Adaba Bay Media Logan tenyina tjerbaunis heta Gizawitqeman ambinye belo Yezemaman lia kana Ona tsinawkatana askatzulu Ikoni mewinamunfesawimarja ochi Nkachu yila Tekuzienowchi Zegabinfilmochi Telkatana thaniwchi Pa Adaba Bay Media Hikarbalu Raayaachi Gizionyamakalana zemanonyoachi Pa ona tinatrumarja ochi Po katidagvo Laagarachi nblum La alamesuvmat darasnu Adesaachi Adaba Bay Infomedia@gmail.com Web siteachi Yaginun Yerdun Yolachinuslonu
Adaba Bay Media yenina Adaba Bay Media yenina Adaba Bay Media yenina Adaba Bay Media yolu lachinunam Ye nyavitasaw Adaba Bay Media nimerekka thaliyenantast Do your parents watch Adaba Bay Media? Watch, follow, subscribe and help Adaba Bay Adaba Bay Media Logan tenyina jerbaunis heta
Welcome everyone and thank you for joining us This is Adaba Bay Media Spirit Digest Program My name is Hewa I'll be your host for today As we've been discussing here on Adaba Bay Media The importance of voting Especially both in the local and in the general election To get, really to get our voices heard And make sure that what we need Is being heard as a community, right? So, today I have invited a guest Her name is Hannah Bogale Let's come and talk to us about her candidacy For city council at large for Aurora, Colorado And how we can participate really In local elections where politics really does matter And in a way that we can affect And make changes for the things that we want in our community I'd like to ask everyone here To please go ahead and like and share this conversation And we'll be right back
Adaba Bay Media Logan tenyina tjerbaunis heta Gizawitqeman ambinye belo Yezemaman lia kana Ona tsinawkatana askatzulu Ikoni mewinamunfesawimarja ochi Nkachu yila Tekuzienowchi Zegabinfilmochi Telkatana thaniwchi Pa Adaba Bay Media Hikarbalu Raayaachi Gizionyamakalana zemanonyoachi Pa ona tinatrumarja ochi Po katidagvo Laagarachi nblum La alamesuvmat darasnu Adesaachi Adaba Bay Infomedia@gmail.com Web siteachi Yaginun Yerdun Yolachinuslonu chitupea Pa Adaba Bay Anzikkibalen Adaba Bay Media
Welcome back everyone and thank you for joining us If you're just joining us We are going to be talking about local election Especially focusing on the city council run for Aurora, Colorado With a candidate Hannah Bogale Who is a millionaire entrepreneur Who's also a social advocate and a community leader She's here to talk to us about her journey Into becoming a candidate for city council of course Thank you for being here Hannah and welcome
Thank you Hewa Thank you for giving me this opportunity And for showing up at a very, very last minute notice
Of course And I know this is a very busy time for you Because election is just about a month away So I really appreciate you making the time To come here and talk to us about your journey
You're welcome
So in your own words, who is Hannah Bogale?
First and foremost, I am Daughter, a sister, an entrepreneur, a social advocate I'm also on multiple boards Just to serve my community All in all, I'm passionate about serving all people Not only Ethiopians or Americans, but everybody
Absolutely Where did you grow up?
So I was born in Ethiopia I grew up in South Africa Went to school in Swaziland It's a little And I finished my senior year of high school in Overland In Aurora as you might know because you also grew up here So I'm pretty much, I grew up everywhere
I love that I actually went to school at Range View But when I was in high school, I used to work part-time At the 7-Eleven by Overland? Yeah, so
The slushes from there are amazing
Oh my god It was so bad working there because you know it was free for me And it took some discipline
Right
How were you raised? What were the principles that you were taught as you were growing up?
That prayer and hard work is very, very important I come from a very strict Christian family And that contributed to my rebelliousness at times However, I found my way back home, I would say Once I, when I grew up, I understood what my parents were talking about And what they were trying to keep me from So that is the type of environment that I grew up in And so hard work and prayer is the two things that are still close to my heart
Yeah, I love that You know, when we get to that age Where we actually appreciate our parents for the lessons that they taught us And we see their value in that I think that's like one point of maturity You're just like, yes, I have arrived And it feels really great What do you do? I know we're going to talk a bit more about your candidacy But before then, you're an entrepreneur And what does that mean? How did you get into it? And what do you actually do?
Right now, in real estate And we're investing in commercial real estate And we're also working on government contracts However, before that, I have started and failed at so many businesses It gives you, A, the courage to get up and try it again But I understand that entrepreneurship might get glamorized Especially in this day and age However, there's a lot of things that come with it It's mentally exhausting, emotionally straining It's not easy But now, I would say that it was all worth it And I will say that I enjoyed the process now I didn't enjoy it when I was in it But it makes sense The big picture makes sense
What changed for you to enjoy the process now?
Well, you understand the fruits of your labors are paying off, right? And not only that, you At first, the beginning of any entrepreneurship is money, money Especially when you're younger And then your priorities change as your business grows You're responsible for many families And so money is not the only thing that you factor in And that comes with some type of maturity And character development, I think
Yeah, I love that When you're establishing, you know, your different ventures Or when you're trying to invest in anything What are you looking for? What are the values that you look for in a business?
I would say, again, money and profit margins are of course attractive And not good on paper Again, where I'm at right now Especially if it's like a partnership venture I would like to see somebody's character And see if they can cover my weaknesses I can cover theirs Even in businesses, if it's something that's going to serve other people In the long run, you will see that that's the only thing that's going to survive Is giving services to other people Or working for the betterment of your community And so that's the only, like, and the money is the byproduct So like, it's inevitable that the money is going to come Once you do establish that type of service industry Or whatever you're doing, yeah
Yeah, that's such a beautiful way of looking at it Because then you're not necessarily driven by just making money Which, as we can see especially with, you know, the aggressive capitalism We've been seeing right now that is affecting the poor And really making poor people poorer It's really amazing to see young entrepreneurs like you Who are more interested in the process And making sure that the community is taken care of And feeling responsible for the people that work for them So thank you for sharing that with us In your journey so far, in the last few years What have you seen success as? Have you seen it change as far as your definition of what success is? And how do you, how do you see it now? And how did you understood it before? And what does success mean to you?
That's a really great question I think, again, money being like the only focus That's what I thought success was But constant growth in your, in yourself and in your business While maintaining your peace, I think, is the definition of success Like, I like to sleep at night, knowing that I've done everything right
Yeah, yeah Clean conscience, yeah
Yeah, I think, I think, once, once you do acquire a certain, a certain type of Income or what have you You really appreciate the little things Like the peace and family And the little things are what become bigger So that's, that's really what it is Like, your personal growth plus your business growth, right? Slow and steady, right? What do they say? The slowest way is the fastest way to get there? I think, I'm probably butchering it, but it is Slow is the fastest way to get there, I think So, slow and steady, right? But growth however And finding and maintaining peace and all of that
Yeah With a lot of self-employed people And even, I think, people that are trying to improve themselves Including myself, something that seems to be very, very hard Is to be consistent and doing something consistently, day in and day out What is your secret in staying consistent in the things that you want to do? And making sure that you're showing up every day For the things that you need to show up for?
That, great question Discipline is, is really hard to master And certain types, I mean, some, certain times, we mess up And it's okay, and you have to show yourself grace And say, you know, it's fine Just because you messed up one thing, like, if I am to miss before If I was to miss out, like, on a workout or what have you I'll be like, oh my god, like, what have I done? It will be like in the back of my head But now, you just have to show yourself some grace and get back at it tomorrow But don't, don't ever feel like because you're slacking off That is also the process, right? Like, teaching yourself how to get back up And get into the program that you've created for yourself There is no blueprint to this You pretty much figure it out as you go
Yeah When did you know, or when did you decide that you want to go working for yourself?
So I saw my biology professor working at Whole Foods And he, I think, I think he had his masters working on a PhD I'm not really sure what he was doing, but he's very, very educated However, he did do that And I saw him at Whole Foods stacking groceries And that was his part-time job And I questioned myself again At the beginning, it was like, how do we make money? Like, what is, what is? And then that, that kind of gave me an aha moment But then, when I got into entrepreneurship That by itself was It was a total type of beast, so Yeah, but that is the first time that I went Maybe, like, this is not it, like What about yourself? What about yourself? What did you, why did you choose IT?
Oh wow I'm getting interviewed I think for me, it was, I didn't quite know I went to, I went to school for environmental engineering, right? And then, I didn't quite like it, but I didn't know what I would do, right? And I really did not see myself working in that field I was just miserable And I had a conversation with my brother Who was living in Seattle at the time And he was just like, you know, come, come over here There was this short program that here the Habashia community has And he said, you know, you could try it for a few months And apply for jobs if you like it You could continue, if not, we'll figure something out And I came and I stayed and I took the course And it was, it was fun enough for me to To be able to work and also give me, I think, what I really loved Also was giving you a lot of time To be able to do community work And volunteer on my church And be able to mentor some kids And really give back the things that I wish, when I was a teenager, was given to me Especially when it comes to direction and mentorship And what study, what not study, where to go, who to hang out with And all those things that I felt like I figured out Such at a late age in life, and I'm still figuring it out Because I didn't have a mentor And I didn't even know to ask for those things So I think IT specifically gave me that extra time To spend with, with the things, the projects that I really love to do And even do at DAWA And meet really awesome people that are doing great work In our community such as yourself, so I think sometimes work is also really A means that gives you flexibility and better to your life In a way that not every job or not every opportunity can And I think for me, IT is that I did not expect this question
Well, it did say conversation, so I figured, hey Good, good though, that's pretty impressive
I like that What motivates you?
Family, God, and honestly, I can never say that I've gotten to the point that I'm at And wherever I'm going, which is hopefully to more success Without the people that are holding me together Like, there is a community of people that are helping me Which each and everything that I'm doing They will correct me when I'm pronouncing things wrong Like, even from the smallest thing to the biggest decisions They're always helping me out When it comes to my faith, there are always people that are saying, hey, like, we haven't seen you at church Like, what's going on? And that is really important, so that motivates me And I'm pretty sure all these people that are helping me So I could become something to inspire others And so they count on me, and that motivates me a lot
I love that, community responsibility I think something also I noticed in our community And when I first, you know, started hanging out in our community Just felt like, everybody's so nosy Why are you asking me all these questions? Mind your business, kind of thing And then I understood, that's what they love And that's what they make sure that You're staying accountable for the things that you say you do They won't let you BS And they won't let you, you know, just make up excuses For not, you know, things that you would And really, I found it really reassuring to know that, like Well, I will never fall back in a lot of things That a lot of, the bad habits, a lot of, you know, the issues that I dealt with and all that stuff That I have for watching me and making sure that I stayed And I become my best that I can And it's just a great gift that our community does give us
But that's, that's a great response Because obviously, we've all walked through the journeys of battling your demons And going through habits And that accountability part of it is huge Especially when it comes to our community And again, they're also learning to, you know, have grace And let you slide a little So that's, that's good Back in the days, it wasn't like that
Well, I don't know, for me, I think my siblings are a bit rough sometimes And the way they address all the things that I need to fix And they say it in a comedy as well, so you can't really be mad But definitely, yeah, there's, there's a lot of grace that's given as well Yeah, I'd like to ask all of our viewers that are currently watching To please go ahead and like and share this conversation with your loved ones And we'll be right back after a quick break
Adaba Bay Media Logan tenyina tjerbaunis heta Gizawitqeman ambinye belo Yezemaman lia kana Ona tsinawkatana askatzulu Ikoni mewinamunfesawimarja ochi Nkachu yila Tekuzienowchi Zegabinfilmochi Telkatana thaniwchi Pa Adaba Bay Media Hikarbalu Raayaachi Gizionyamakalana zemanonyoachi Pa ona tinatrumarja ochi Po katidagvo Laagarachi nblum La alamesuvmat darasnu Adesaachi Adaba Bay Infomedia@gmail.com Web siteachi Yaginun Yerdun Yolachinuslonu chitupea Pa Adaba Bay Anzikkibalen Adaba Bay Media
Welcome back everyone and thank you for joining us We're having a conversation with Hannah Bogale Who is a city council candidate for Aurora, Colorado at large Hannah, could you tell us why you decided to run for office?
I did not see myself or any immigrant run And there are six candidates And we joined the race very late But I do believe that it's time that we see Some people of color and some people that are immigrant And have representation at the council Aurora is the most diverse city in the state of Colorado And that is something to be spoken for And I think it's really important that people like myself and other immigrants To get involved in American politics and make their voice heard
Yeah How, growing up in Aurora, right? There's a large Ethiopian population I think last count was at like 20,000 or something Yeah, there's a large Nigerian community There's a large Indian community And you can see that from the churches and the stores and every corner, right? Like, all the different conversations or the different languages that you hear But we don't have representation as far as city council And even, you know, the representatives that are going to Congress and such Because we don't run, like you said So it's really important And I was really excited when I saw that And I was just like, oh, someone we know Like, you know, someone that we could trust Someone that looks like us, is running for office And it's really powerful to even just see that And know that this is possible for us as well
I am so glad you said that Because everybody's so focused on winning a race And for me, again, I keep on saying, it's about the process The byproduct is winning, and that's amazing, right? We do want to win, we do want, want to be represented However, we also want to inspire younger people That it's not about perfectionism, right? Like, you don't have to be perfect You don't have to be speak I mean, you don't have to speak perfectly and be a total politician You can be authentic and, and get yourself in the politics And you can have your own type of imprint on this journey And so that's really what we're trying to achieve Versus, everybody's so scared of like the winning or losing Or, I don't, I don't even know what people's fears are But we want to encourage and give people courage to just participate Because that by itself comes with a lot of experience That you might need later on in life So I want to stress the importance of that
I love that What do you bring to the table, I guess, for people that live in Aurora? When they're looking at you as a candidate? What do you stand for? What are you, what are you wanting to give people as a, you know, elected official?
I did, again, I was raised in various different places So I bring diversity And I understand what it means to be an immigrant and start from zero, right? Of course, public safety is a matter that I would like to touch upon Affordable housing and small businesses But as you might know, that a lot of immigrants are business owners And the backbone of the Aurora economy are small businesses, yes And so I would like to bring my entrepreneurship skills And apply it to the city council Because I've literally worked my way up In that lane, I know the journey And so if we're able to bridge the gap between, hey, what is the city offering? What is the Aurora people, what are they bringing to the table? And bridge that gap, that'll be great
Yeah, I love that Could you say a little bit more about the importance of voting for us immigrants? And specifically for the Ethiopian-American community?
Absolutely So again, right now, for instance, I'm just going to give an example The Democratic Party may be not responding to Ethiopians' diaspora ask For what is going on in Ethiopia And so it is really important Because it's not only about your life here But also your family's life that's getting affected in Ethiopia And, and your voting really matters Meaning, if you're registered and we're able to say, hey If you do not respond to our ask, right? Of course, it has to be a reasonable ask We can say, this is a currency that we're not willing to give away for free, right? These are the things that are going on And who they align themselves with And what their motives are really matter And so if you're able to come in in a race, it doesn't matter again And say, you know, we're going to keep our votes in-house, you know? And once other ethnic groups see us doing this They're going to replicate their own in-house voting, you know? Gathering, and understand how valuable their votes are Because it's not only about this Think outside of yourself, it is a bigger impact So, everybody needs to be registered Everybody needs to participate and vote It's really, really important
Yeah, I think even just talking to you, one thing, it's becoming really courage to me Is it's not even about winning or losing at this point It's about knowing that we could keep, like you said, their votes in-house These are our votes, and this is a voting block that you guys are If you wanted, you need to ask us what we need and what our issues are And make sure that you're going to be able to address those for us Before we just go ahead and give you these votes, right? Regardless of if it's a Democrat or Republican But that's such a powerful statement to make, for sure
Yes, and imagine how many Ethiopians are in, in America, right? And it's just, numbers always win And we do have the numbers We're really hardworking, we're And so like, if every ethnic group starts replicating this system American politicians will pay attention So you're no longer, you know, the back, the child that's sitting in the back of the class, right? Have a front seat And you are having these important discussions that need to be had Because it is your family's life that are in danger It is your country, and so that's pretty important
Yeah, absolutely So what is the difference when we're coming back to your candidacy Between just running for city council for a specific neighborhood Versus what you are at large? What is the benefit? Or is there even, is there even advantage or disadvantage to these? Or how did you choose to just be at large candidate?
Yes, I'm sorry if I cut you off, but Well, the word, the word would be just your neighborhood voting, right? But then that also comes with limitations of nobody else outside of that living zone can vote for you But the city of Aurora, and as you know, a lot of Ethiopians are scattered everywhere That's going to give them an opportunity to vote So it's the entire city of Aurora that's able to vote for me And so that opens it up, right? And, and the race is a little harder And the numbers are a little higher versus just that word
Yeah, so what does it mean for you to be an Ethiopian-American candidate? And how has that reception been within the community as well?
It's been amazing Again, I always see Ethiopia as my mother and America as my dad I became successful I have learned a lot I've, I've met really, really good people I've always mentioned this The lady that gave me my first, and I've tried a million things The lady that gave me my first contract And that changed my life immediately was a white lady So I'm all for unity And there's a lot of people that were good to me And contributed to my success there's a lot of people that were good to me and contributed to my success. Ethiopia is where I was born and I, and I truly appreciate it. It's a very historical place. And I have love for both and that's why I'm wanting to merge both. And the response has been amazing. Uh, it's been phenomenal.
Yeah, I love that. Um, for a candidate, right, especially only a month away from election, what does a day-to-day campaigning look like? Uh, if you could just give us like a quick overview of what they might look like, um, yeah.
Uh, this, uh, interviews and meetings after meetings, um, asking for endorsements, uh, which is pretty huge. But I don't, I don't feel that a lot of people knew my name because I've never ran before, so this is new. Uh, but they do like the fact that it's, I'm the first Ethiopian to ever, like Ethiopian female that's really young. I'm the youngest of from the entire um candidate list. And so they're, they're really excited. And and so it's something new to them. It's something new to me, but the response has been absolutely great.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, for people that, you know, want to run for office or even participate in helping someone run for office, what is your advice um for the Ethiopian-American community, also for the immigrant community that we've been discussing about?
I would say just start. Um, don't let your fears hold you back. Um, it's okay to be imperfect. Um, it's okay to learn along the way and it's okay to say that you don't know. There are a lot of English words that were thrown at me to where I was like, I, I don't know what that means. Please elaborate. And it's just totally fine. It's, it's not the end of the world. Again, you learn and you grow. Uh, ego death has a lot to do with it, but
I love that.
That's a conversation for another day. Hey, um, you, you, you learn and and it, it's really important though, like that people start. Like I, I want people to start and it's not about being perfect and it's okay. So yeah, that, that is, that is my advice.
Yeah, and I think I love what you say about knowing English. Well, um, I think I speak English pretty well, but I have moments where I just lose my words. And I could, I could see why that could be in honor of reckoning, especially when you're thinking about running for office, when you're having to say who you are, what you are about, um, even participate in debates. And such, and like you said, it might be um really, you know, like the, the edge of ego when you have to ask people that, I don't know what that means. Right? Elaborate that for me. Because for some reason, we've been told that not knowing enough English word is not, you know, it's not good. I, I don't understand where that came from.
Right, right. Um, you're absolutely right. I, I don't think, I don't think there is anything wrong with asking and with being different. Uh, like a lot of the political candidates are very serious and what have you. I mean, that's good if that's the character that you chose. But what I encourage people to do is be themselves uh in this entire process. And it will, it will not be a very excruciating.
Yeah, you don't need to get into a specific character to run for office.
Absolutely be yourself is what I say.
Yeah, I love that. Uh, so for people that live in Aurora, how, and even for other folks, how can they still register? How can they vote? Um, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, they can register. Um, ballot ballots um will begin getting mailed this week, I believe. So and and they're, they're anticipating that after this week, twenty-five percent of the votes are already going to go out. But people should be anticipating their ballots in the mail. Um, and if they have not registered, to please go ahead and register and get a ballot and so um they can vote for me.
Where can they register?
Um, Secretary of State is one.
Okay, awesome. So they could register online, vote.org or I think they were still doing, uh, when I was living there, you could register at the DMV. I don't know if that's still the case.
With the Corona, I don't think people uh love you enough to stay at the DMV for four hours.
That is true. I love how you said I love you enough.
I mean, like, they love you, but um
Yeah, absolutely. Um, thank you so much for being here. I know it's a busy day, busy week, busy month for you. Election is, uh, last day of election is November second, uh, if I'm not mistaken. And I'd like to give you the floor if you want to say, if you have any last words that you want to share with us, encouragements, um, you want to share with us.
To all Americans, um, thank you for sharing your country with us, right? And to all my Ethiopians, um, we still have hope and we're thriving. Um, and I would like to inspire the younger people to um participate more in politics and in business uh and be confident in who you are.
I love that. Um, thank you so much for being here and thank you everyone that joined us for uh this conversation. We'd like to wish everyone a happy week and happy weekend to come up and we'll come back with a different conversation next week. Have a wonderful week.
Thank you.